Hey Doug, how are you doing? The mics are on.
They are.
The mics are on.
I probably shouldn't say. Thank you.
Everybody thanks. Good evening citizens, council and staff. I call the city council meeting for April 5th, 2016 to order. Corcoran, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Beckman?
Here.
Mayor Protan Brinkman?
Here.
Councilmember Serenick?
Present.
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Councilmember Cole?
Here.
Councilmember Hopping?
Here.
Councilmember Valdez?
Present.
Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
We may have to delay for a moment. Corcoran, the names are wrong up on the ballot board there, so we'll take a few minute break.
Get your hat, Wendy.
Okay, with that, the agenda has been posted and presented to city council. Are there any other changes or additions to the agenda? Not hearing any, we'll move ahead to public comment. Item four on the agenda, the public comment is an opportunity for anyone to express opinions or ask questions that are not part of the public hearings. There will be two opportunities for public comment at the beginning of the meeting regarding consent agenda and general business items, and later in the meeting before the council reports. An immediate response should not be expected. Anyone who would like to speak during either public comment session, please sign on the green sheets that are in the back of the room along the table, and the one for the first session is coming down here now. We expect the comments to be civil, disrespectful behavior will not be tolerated, and if there's anyone who didn't get a chance to sign up, I'll make sure you get an opportunity to speak. There's a three-minute time limit. We have several people who've signed up. First one, Jim Reese.
Well, good evening, members of council. Jim Reese, Executive Director of LIFT. I'm here tonight on behalf of LIFT to ask that you do not consider the ordinance that's before you to abolish LIFT, but in lieu of that, we, LIFT would request that we would conduct a joint work session, that maybe we can discuss issues that are of concern to council, and see if we can come to another way of addressing those, rather than taking this drastic measure. Just wanted to kind of go over real quickly some of the benefits, I know my time is limited, of what LIFT does. And I don't know if we can have the screen on that or not. Why are we doing that? As you all know, I mean, the main job of LIFT, of urban renewal, is to prevent and cure slum and blight conditions throughout the city. And it's been working well in other cities all around the metro area, and I've got some examples here tonight that I'd like to show you, discuss. One in particular, an economic development study that was just completed for Colorado Springs Urban Renewal Authority. In addition to preventing slum and blight, the goal of LIFT is to upgrade city infrastructure, resulting in cost savings to the city taxpayers, but also by doing so through providing gap financing to stimulate development in underperforming areas, and try to basically help pay for some of those extraordinary costs that normally couldn't be afforded in a new development. And finally, as I'll mention here in a minute, attracting new business to the city, creating jobs, attracting residents, and growing the revenue. I don't know if you can see that, is that upside down?
Wendy, Wendy, the TV's not on for us down here.
Are you wearing your Fitbits? You know how many steps we're getting? Oh, bummer.
Can you zoom in a little bit?
We'll take a moment to get this prepared. Not have a count towards your time here, Jim.
I had a good 10, 15 minutes, right?
Yeah.
I think we can see it pretty well, though, right from there. I just, the areas that I've highlighted in yellow are the areas that I wanted to address. This is a study that was just completed in February, was completed by a company called Summit Economics. They're a well-known economic firm across the state of Colorado and actually nationally, completely done independent of the authority. So I just wanted to bring out some highlights there, as you can kind of see in yellow. This is a compilation of six urban renewal areas. You can see there's a lot more there on the left, but only six of them are really performing really strongly at this point, and the others are in the works about ready to get started. You can see some of them are fairly new. Building space, over this period of 12 years, has created 5 million square feet of building space, expected to grow to 10.3 million by the time the areas are completed. Real estate value of $450 million has been created. Population has grown by 1,836 new residents. And employment, this is impressive, employment, 4,500 new jobs have been created, expected to grow to 10,000 jobs by the time these projects are all built out. Total economic impact, $445 million to the economy. I mean, these are significant numbers, and expected to grow to 1.2 billion, not million, billion, by the time they're built out. And I just wanted to use this as an example, that these are 12 to 15-year period. Littleton's urban renewal areas are less than two years old. We've got a lot of potential here. We can grow this economy, we can clean up the areas, we can increase the population, and create jobs. So I just wanted to point that out, because I know in the past, we've always talked about some really cool projects all over the metro area and what they look like, but these are hard numbers, and I just wanted to kind of show you that we have the same potential here to grow that. So I would ask that, in lieu of passing an ordinance abolishing LIFT, that you consider reviewing a current status of the urban renewal areas with the urban renewal board and staff, and discuss what the issues are, what council leads needs to be addressed, and talk about some of the changes. We've had changes in the state statute, we've had changes in local laws, how does that affect LIFT? So anyhow, I'd like to at least consider exploring those options before you consider abolishment. Thanks.
Thank you. So you have three minutes.
John Watson, 4,500 West Hinsdale Avenue, Littleton, 80128, District 4. I'm here as a taxpayer to thank the majority members of council for their initiative in undertaking this proposal to abolish LIFT. We've seen the experience of spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on LIFT for a project, except there is no project. We've seen the 20 years of LIFT in the festival marketplace, and $20 million, that's gone. So at this point in time, we don't see that it's a viable proposal to have an urban renewal authority, spending money without a project, without a proposal, with merely trying to create another idea. The idea should happen before we start spending hundreds of thousands or tens of millions of dollars to try to find an idea. And spending money, picking winners and losers by spending $300,000 at Breckenridge Brewery or $500,000 with Kroger, isn't creating new jobs. Breckenridge Brewery was already coming here, or should I say Budweiser that owns Breckenridge Brewery? That's who we subsidized. And I don't see any benefit for taxpayers in subsidizing businesses that are already here, already coming here, or on a concept that has no project. And that's why I wanted to speak tonight. I'm going to give you your time back, because that's what I wanted to say, and thank the majority for undertaking this action. I think it's courageous and appropriate. Good evening.
Thank you. Don Brunz?
I have copies here for each of you.
Don, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, council. Don Brunz, District 4, 7332 South Costilla Street. Special appreciation goes to Councilman Valdez, who moved, and the four council members who voted with him to bring potential dismantlement of urban renewal in the LIFT board before the council for action. Here are a few reasons of support doing so. Urban renewal authorizes the diversion of tax revenue from duly constituted taxing entities by, excuse me, by redirecting incremental above-based property and sales tax revenue to fuel urban development. Whether or not whatever development that occurs within designated areas was subsidized by TIF revenue to begin with. Such development unfairly competes with other businesses, and all too easily falls well outside the character of the communities into which it is placed, therefore compromising those communities' sustainable future and quality of life. The Littleton Invests for Tomorrow, or LIFT Board, in name and action, suggests that its primary function is regarded as promotion of development, even of vacant and agricultural land, rather than resolving bona fide urban blight. The state's urban renewal legislation appears to be so broadly written that virtually the entire city qualifies as blight. This has led to an apparent abuse of municipal power and an exercise of the board's police powers from which citizens have no recourse. Approval of urban renewal plans, as provided for in legislation, seems predicated on having first identified specific projects, but four large expansive areas were delineated for urban renewal in 2014, absent the identification of such specific projects. The application of urban renewal appears to be focused on short-term business gain and profit margins, meanwhile sacrificing desired community aesthetics, our city's small-town and open-space charm, and the quality of life it offers residents. Rumblings of potential municipal tax increases echoed from City Hall would be unnecessary had urban actions not begun to divert existing tax revenue to subsidize types and levels of development, of building, that many of us find objectionable. Proponent claims that the service infrastructure for what they want to build cannot be paid for without urban renewal subsidies should serve as a red flag warning that such development is less than optimal and may well be unsustainable. Last but not least, we moved to Littleton because of its appealing open space and small-town charm. The urban renewal we are watching unfold, bent primarily on economic infusion, is headed for the creation of new blight rather than resolving whatever old blight problems may exist. That will surely erode Littleton's distinctive charm and community character, which is its single greatest asset. It is our competitive edge and sets us apart from other cities. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Don. Pat Fitzgerald? Pat, you have three minutes.
Thank you, sir. I want to veer off to another subject, and that's about the availability of the council The very latest video record of these meetings that I can find is three months old. Everything after January 5th is not available. And I've complained about this to the city clerk and to members of council. Something needs to be done to restore that transparency and open access. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
My name is Kent Bagley. I reside at 1467 West Briarwood Avenue in District 3. And thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. The big thing that I wanted to talk about is the urban renewal issue. And to say to you that I know that you think the city is open for business, I think you really need to think about that in relation to what you're prepared to do tonight, because I think that if you pass this, it is not open for business. Go and talk to the people in the development community. I want to also provide a sense, as you all know, I'm a member of the RTD Board, I'm also on the Denver Union Station Project Authority Board, and I know that Denver Union Station has no comparison to what's going on in Littleton. But there are roughly $2 billion of commercial real estate development occurring around Denver Union Station, but for the opportunity for tax increment financing in the area around Denver Union Station, there probably would be no change would have occurred. That is the hub of the fast-track system. I know there's been a suggestion to remove urban renewal in Littleton, and I think that what you need to look at is it's one of the tools in the toolbox that you have, and to throw it away, I think is a major mistake. You know, there may be issues with the LIFT Board, and how it was constituted and reconstituted, and I probably wouldn't disagree with many of the comments that have been made. I think that rather than removing the urban renewal authority and LIFT, it might be much better to step back and do some of the things that Jim Reese is talking about, and have a further conversation. You know, smaller tests of small areas within the context of the four urban renewal areas, and I'm thinking mostly of Columbine Square, and even constraining what's being looked at around Columbine Square, might be much more controllable. And I would say, I would ask you to think about scaling back rather than the total removal, associated with the tools of urban renewal, and there are things that the city can utilize in the future to make it a better city for all of the citizens of Littleton. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Kent. Mr. Paul Bingham?
Paul Bingham, 236 West Delaware Circle. I'd like to thank you folks very much, the majority of you folks, on the 15th of March for voting to unravel LIFT. That was a wise thing to do, and I appreciate it very much. And I'm here to urge you tonight to continue to pursue that direction by approving this resolution tonight. Jim Reese is right, urban renewal has worked well in other places, other cities and states. LIFT, on the other hand, has not worked well in Littleton. We've had an urban renewal association in this city for 30 years. We don't have anything to show for it, except for the loss of a bunch of money lately, and $12 million in the past. LIFT has been a miserable failure at Littleton, and you're wise that you've recognized that fact and starting to unravel it, and I appreciate that. I agree with Mr. Brunz and Mr. Watson, I'm not going to go into a bunch more detail, I'll keep this short. Anyway, thank you again, and please approve this ordinance tonight at 5B. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Pam Chadbourne? You have three minutes.
I'm here to talk about both 5A and 5B. But let me echo, I wanted to thank you for your March 15th council meeting. I think it was the best council meeting I've ever seen. I'd like to commend you for moving to motions, which, and having them second, which causes discussion. Your discussions were to the point, they revealed to us, the voters, what you, our elected officials, are thinking about what these motions were. Thank you for that March 15th meeting. So 5A adds $200,000 to the capital projects fund. I'm asking what that's for, it's possibly for the street state escape study, and that's fine with me, but I'd like you to amend the ordinance to identify the purpose of the added expenditure with rationale, because that's what you do when you pass a budget. Then on 5B, which is to abolish LIFT, the 700 acres in the four urban renewal plans are not slummed or blighted to the degree of being imminent threats to public health, safety, or morals, which is what the state laws intended for urban renewal to cure. An implementation of urban renewal in areas this size is impractical for our city. So I'd like to talk about what repealing the urban renewal right now would enable us to do in the future. We can revitalize economic gardening. We can start a process to define specific sites that actually qualify for real urban renewal with criteria in addition to the state's minimums that fit our city. What would really inhibit development? For example, pollution, time considerations. For example, if shump moves out, how long should we let that sit vacant before we declare it slummed or blighted? I don't think immediately. I think maybe, what, three years? We should discuss that. We should develop a citywide historic preservation plan, so that we know what we want to urge and promote restoration of sites with character on, before we include those in your plans. We could strengthen and update our economic development plan, and have 10- or 20-year plan for all of the tools. Let's plan them all out. Urban renewal is not the only one. Let's figure out how much we want to spend on each. Let's stop expensive and unnecessary rebranding and modernization activities by the city, and redirect the city staff to do an update of the comprehensive plan, doing all this stuff.
Pam, your time is running out.
Yes, thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. And you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, council. Jeanne Erickson, I live in District 1. I'm here to congratulate you and tell you how proud I am of you for bringing to us ordinance number 3-2016 regarding the abolishment of urban renewal, also known as LIFT. I believe the economy drives what should and should not be built, and by possibly forcing development, by giving developers taxpayers money that should be used elsewhere to run the city... that should be used elsewhere to run the city, is not a wise choice for our city. Development is happening in Littleton and will continue to happen in the future because it is the right fit at the right time. I encourage you to abolish LIFT and let development keep happening in Littleton when it is the right time to do so. All kinds of development is going on now without any help from LIFT at all. Let's spend that money wisely and not divert it for 25 years. I encourage you to vote yes on this ordinance upon second reading. Our lives begin to change the day we become silent about things that matter. Martin Luther King Jr., who died 48 years ago yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanne. Carol Fay.
I'm Carol Fay. I live in District 3. One of the reasons for disbanding LIFT might be they're not taking their responsibilities all that seriously. At their last meeting, apparently they reported that they had misplaced money, that money had fraudently disappeared from the bank account, and then some more disappeared. The part that really alarms me the very most is they're apparently deciding not to have an audit. And that really concerns me, that they would be given responsibility for our tax money, which we work pretty hard to earn, turn it over, and then have the people who take possession of it not seem to be very concerned about what happens to it or about stopping the leak, whatever it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. That completes everyone I had on the sign up. Was there anyone who didn't get a chance to sign up? Brings us to item 5 on the agenda, which are called Consent Agenda items. Consent Agenda items may be adopted by a single motion. All ordinances must be read by title prior to a vote on the motion. Any consent agenda item may be removed at the request of a council member. Item 5A is ordinance 2-2016. It's an ordinance on first reading, amending ordinance number 95, series of 2015, known as the Annual Appropriation Bill for all Municipal Purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2016 and ending December 31st, 2016. Like to pull that. Item number 5B is ordinance 3-2016. This is an ordinance abolishing the Littleton Invest for Tomorrow Urban Renewal Authority pursuant to CRS 31-25-115 (2), and repealing the city's urban renewal plans. Pull that. Item number 5C is ID number 16-64. That's the certification of the March 15th, 2016 regular meeting minutes. Pull that. That completes the consent agenda list. We have three items that need to be discussed. 5A was pulled by Councilmember Valdez. Jerry.
Do we want to vote on the one? Oh, that's right.
No, that's it.
That's right. Mine's just for clarification purposes only. So this would be for the Finance Director, is he here tonight? Yeah, thank you.
Good evening. Doug Farman, Finance Director.
Hey, for clarification for me only, this is just approving the allocations of funds. We're not approving a specific contract of any sort, correct?
That's correct. That will be on the council's agenda for April 19th to review the contract.
Right, and it does say that. So this is just moving the funds so that when going forward, should something be approved, we have the funds available that we had discussed previous year?
That's correct. That's kind of a mechanical process right now to hopefully approve the first reading of the ordinance, then have the second reading, and then the contract before council on April 19.
Thank you.
And I need to discuss one matter that has really nothing to do with council and what we're talking about tonight. But there was a problem printing and publishing the announcement in the newspaper. So based on that, we need to change a date. When it was announced in the newspaper, the city manager advises me, it wasn't done properly according to our procedures. And to get it reprinted means we have to have a second hearing date. So in order to do that, it would need to be amended for a second reading date of May 3rd, 2016, not the April 19th. So do I need to make a formal amendment and motion for that?
If you just go ahead and make it in the motion for approval.
I can do that. I can do that, Jerry. That's okay.
Again, I want to just clarify what you said. So the contract that you had mentioned in your report is still coming April 19th. Is that, that doesn't change, right?
No, we would bring them both at the same time. Because we've got the resolution, the language in the resolution that we will bring to you will be contingent on council approving the appropriation on second reading.
So I said, is April 19th right? And you said, no.
It is not. We will bring them both back to you on May 3rd.
May, okay, so, cool. All right.
So they're packaged, and you can talk to them, about them together.
Okay, so both items will be back. Cool, thank you.
Any other discussion, Doug?
Yeah. I think this is a step in the right direction, at least for the appropriation, since we're making the appropriation from the budget before we're actually spending it. But according to page 19 of the 2014 CAFRA, the city defines capital assets as assets with an initial individual cost of more than $5,000 and an estimated useful life in excess of one year. This is an expenditure of $200,000 that results in a number of deliverables that come back to us, some of them being plans, some of them being studies. That is way in excess of the $500,000. If the expected life of these plans is less than a year, then we're spending an awful lot of money for something that has a very fast expiration date. So part of the concern that was expressed in the last time this came up and the time before that it came up by both Jerry and myself is a single source, which we have a charter section, Section 100, that requires capital items in excess of $5,000 to go through a competitive bidding process unless the council passes an ordinance specifically stating why they're not going through that. If the plan is to bring a resolution on May 3rd, then it's obvious that you're not planning to bring the ordinance here. It's pretty clear that this qualifies for that unless we want to make a statement that no data, software, intangibles that you can't touch aren't capital projects, and I don't think anybody would say that. Each individual component of this, of the five or six items, is by themselves greater than $5,000. And obviously, the whole study is greater than $5,000. I'm having a hard time understanding why we go to such efforts to not follow the procedures that are pretty clear and established for us. I have issues with the study itself. I think we're gilding the lily on downtown. I think we have other areas that need our attention. We just rebuilt Littleton Boulevard a while back. I don't know why we need to do a complete streetscape on Littleton Boulevard when we already designed it with wider sidewalks and separated detached sidewalks. We took into account pedestrian and bike activity. Debbie headed a pedestrian and bike study plan that covered the entire area of the city, including downtown. I don't know why we're duplicating things and while we're going back and redesigning the same projects over and over and over again when we have people coming down telling us that there's other areas of the city that need work. So that means I'm against this.
Thank you. Do we have any additional comments? Then I'll read the motion as amended in order to meet the issues of publishing it appropriately in the newspaper. I move to approve on first reading the ordinance amending ordinance number 95, series of 2015, known as the Annual Appropriation Bill for all Municipal Purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2016 and ending December 31st, 2016, and to schedule a public hearing for May 3rd, 2016 at 6:30 p.m. in the council chamber.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? You ready to vote?
Yep.
The vote is six in favor, with Councilmember Clark voting no. The motion carries six to one.
This brings us to item 5B. 5B was the ordinance abolishing Littleton Invest for Tomorrow was pulled by Councilmember Brinkman.
Thank you. I pulled it not because I want to have a discussion about the merits or the sins of urban renewal tonight, but I pulled it because I don't think that we have had anywhere near the kind of conversation that we need to have as a council, including our lift board, including our planning board, regarding what it is the goals and intentions are. You know, there's lots of information missing on this particular ordinance in order for us to, in my opinion, make a real informed and thoughtful decision. That's certainly not the fault of staff. They're just responding to council's rush to kill and hide the urban renewal body. You know, we spent three years of planning, preparation, learning, education. We probably had in excess of a year's worth of study sessions, researching, meetings, et cetera, on urban renewal. And most of us have sat up here for a number of years and taken pretty heavy fire, including our staff, including the lift board. So I get it that it's exhausting. I get it that it'd be real easy to make this go away. But how do we really know that's what's best for the community? We spent three years discussing and determining that it was good for the community, and we voted it in. So all the reasons we supported urban renewal are still valid. All the speeches, all the comments we've made in support, they're all still true. Nothing has really changed, except that the pressure is getting applied. You know, the attacks are getting personal, and the threats are becoming very real. And that's sad, because that isn't the place from which we, as elected officials, need to make decisions. You know, rumor has it on a reliable source that there are four votes up here to kill this tonight, move it to a second reading, kill it at the second reading. But what I'm really hoping is there's four votes up here tonight that would be in favor of moving this to an additional study so that we can confer with our appointed boards, that being LIFT and planning, meet with our advisors and the experts to critically discern appropriate next steps, get critical questions answered, and review our options so that we do, in fact, do what is best for our community and not just for us. You know, we hear from the community regularly that we're rushing decisions, and why don't we spend more time discussing and studying? Well, we aren't, why aren't we doing that with this issue? We have spent absolutely no time in any conversation about eliminating or reducing or changing or adjusting or whatever the case, urban renewal. Came up as a motion on March 15th, and now we're sitting here with a first reading, move into a second reading to kill it. I really think we've spent more time on many other issues that are of a lot less importance than this. And the end result after discussion, after a study session, may be exactly the same. But as we continue to be reminded, perhaps it is the failure to move this through a thoughtful process that will be our greatest failing. And as such, I would like to make a motion. I move an ordinance...
Are you going to make the main motion?
No, I'm going to make a new motion. I move an ordinance 03-216 abolishing the Littleton Urban Renewal Authority pursuant to CRS 31-25-115 (2), and repealing the city's urban renewal plan be tabled for up to 60 days, during which time council will conduct meetings with our appointed urban renewal authority, the planning board, and other pertinent entities as appropriate in order to learn and explore all sides of the issues and determine in open meetings whether or not the dissolution of LIFT and the city's urban renewal plan is in the best interest of our citizens.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion, and I have just a point of order. Because her motion has 60-day time on it, is it to table indefinitely? Or is it to table with a date certain? A date certain allows debate. No date, there's no debate.
She said up to 60 days, so I'll leave it to the maker of the motion if you want to set a date certain. June 7th is 60 days.
I don't have a problem. I think that my thought here was up to 60 days would give ample time to organize the necessary talent that need to be included in the meetings. It would, you know, not drag it on indefinitely, but this... So I think it's just kind of dependent on how quickly we can get it put together.
Okay, then I'm looking at our legislative rules, G, motion to table. And it's motion to table or postpone to a date certain. It is not item H, which is the motion to table indefinitely. So based on that, then this is a debatable motion, and I want to open it for debate. Comments?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. It says that if it's an unspecified later date, then it's a motion to table indefinitely.
60 days wouldn't be specific enough, no more than?
Up to 60 days is what it's...
That's my question. I'm saying, with saying the 60 days, I understand as being a limit. It's not indefinite. I would prefer to have a date. We can suggest some dates that might work, but that's not in the motion.
It's not. It's up to 60 days, so I would say it's an unspecified date.
Specified. Based on, then, the interpretation is that it is, A, motion to table...
Indefinitely.
Indefinitely. And it's not debatable and requires a majority vote of the members present for passage. This would be item H in our rules.
Why don't you put a date in, Deb?
Okay.
Make it June 7th.
Okay. Tabled until June 7th.
Okay, it's been seconded, but...
So do I need to, I'll accept that modification.
Okay, so if you could just read your motion back again with that date in it to make sure we know what we're discussing, then thanks, Deb.
I move that ordinance 03-216 abolish the Littleton Urban Renewal Authority pursuant... abolishing the Littleton Urban Renewal Authority pursuant to CRS 31-25-115 (2), and repealing the city's urban renewal plan be tabled until June 7th, during which time council will conduct meetings with their appointed urban renewal authority, the planning board, and other pertinent entities as appropriate in order to learn and explore all sides of the issues and determine in open meetings whether or not the dissolution of LIFT and the city's urban renewal plan is in the best interest of our citizens.
Second.
And that has been seconded. So now we have a motion and a second with a...
And I have a question on the motion.
Go ahead.
Are you saying to meet separately with the planning board and the authority? Or were you thinking a joint meeting? I mean, it doesn't matter to me. I just want to make sure I understand what you're...
It intentionally leaves it open in the event that we have to meet separately with them.
Okay, so...
But the intention is that they are both listed in the ordinance that are in the motion, that they, meetings with both of them.
Thank you.
Just for my clarification, was that second from Phil or second from Bill? Bill.
Okay. Thank you. It's a long ways down there. We have similar names, so...
Any additional discussion? I do have, if no one else does.
I do.
At this point in time, I have dissatisfaction with the way the ordinance came up without any analysis. And based on our discussion... And based on our discussion that we had on March 15th, thought that more substance would have been put forward. On March 15th, Councilmember Hoping raised a number of questions as to an understanding of what the issues are, what's lacking, what's missing, what's going to be used in, in place of that. And Councilmember Valdez indicated in, in that discussion that that was a good argument for what would be being brought forward. None of those items are currently included, so asking for some additional time to see that those questions are addressed. And I also like, at this point in time, having a discussion with our, essentially our volunteer-appointed individuals, being both the urban renewal authority and, and the Planning Board, to see that there's transparency in the process. Thank you.
So, yeah, I, I agree obviously with Councilwoman Brinkman on this and it's not, as she said, it doesn't mean that this will not eventually go away. But I think part of the hard work at council is to consider all sides of an issue and we have heard virtually nothing positive about urban renewal in this chamber since I came on board about a year ago. We've had, you know, a strong coterie of, of people who oppose it, who are here frequently and, and have applied the pressure. And that's understandable. I respect their opinions and a lot of them have done hard work to get to their conclusions, but we haven't looked at the other side. And when we're elected, I think part of our responsibility is to consider all sides of an issue, especially something that is as significant as the elimination of a tool that is used satisfactorily, satisfactorily around the country. And you look at, we've, we've cited many examples like Belmar and Streets of South Glen that have, have been very good and very successful entities. Urban renewal had a really rough start and I remember when council first started debating this, I wasn't on council yet and my, my wife read in the paper, oh, they use the words "urban renewal" in blight, "they're screwed," I think was the exact quote. Because they're really unfortunate terms because when urban renewal got started in the 50s to renew housing projects, it was, it was misused a lot of times. Now it's been refined a lot and I don't think that's well understood what the additional controls are. I'd like to learn more about those. There, I learned this week, and this week is the first I've heard positive stuff about urban renewal. I've learned that it doesn't have to be used directly on the site. One of our biggest problems in this city is infrastructure. Urban renewal funds from a development can be used for the adjoining street, to help mend the sewer, to, to help with power relocation that puts power underground, that assists the whole city and all our citizens. It can result in things like higher quality structures because the, the line item for infrastructure may be taken out of a budget, so the, the urban renewal authority can then lay on another requirement to a builder of architectural controls or for a park or for open space that helps preserve our community character. It can anchor transitional developments that help turn cities around. And we can have citizen requests that implement different site requirements that would be widely accepted or desired by the community. And we, we, there were community conversations on this last week. They were well organized and we had some very good speakers. I attended both of them. All the speakers said that used properly, urban renewal can be a very effective tool. So we need to hear all that. We need to really consider this. And we haven't heard all sides. I'd like to get my questions answered, which are, are the questions, are the objections primarily administrative, which most of the objections I've heard have been? We can fix that. Are they just ubiquitous to urban renewal or are there other reasons? I want to know those reasons. This is the hard work at council and it deserves more deliberation than me getting a call that there were four votes in place when it came, before it came forward in a motion at the last meeting. So I agree that we need to be deliberate and, and look at the small sides.
Just, if I could interrupt for a moment, just looking at the calendar and to help the discussion, there is a study session opportunity if we were to do it that way and we'd have to decide to do it that way after this is acted on. But we do have an opportunity for a study session in April 26th and we could, we could move a couple of things and work with that with the manager that keeps the, the calendar here. But then also then that would give us a regular meeting all the way to June 7th, which is the deadline on the motion. But we do have two other regular meetings in that time period. So I just suggest to you, there is an opportunity for a study session that we could determine what we, what we really wanted.
I add in that to Councilman Brinkman's motion, there's additional study sessions too, so with further conversation about how you want to handle Lift, Planning Board, et cetera, either together or separate, there's plenty of opportunity.
Councilmember Valdez.
Yes, thank you. There's been a lot of positive things said about urban renewals over the course of the discussion, the last two, three years. So to say that, for me, I've heard lots of positive things about it at almost every council meeting that we had. The, however, I am willing to discuss this issue hopefully sooner rather than later. So I think you just said we could have a meeting maybe as soon as the 26th, at least to begin the meetings. And I, I'd be willing to start that discussion as to what steps to take. What I had asked for at that meeting was what does it take to remove urban renewal? Okay, the step isn't, wasn't actually to let's get rid of it at this time. I wanted to find out what does it take? And, and that's essentially, I think, is what it's come back to is, but I'm, I'm willing to discuss this a little bit more in depth as to what action we need to take next.
Councilmember Clark.
I've been to multiple council meetings when council has discussed urban renewal and the specific urban renewal plans for hours and hours and hours, multiple times. I've listened to study sessions. It's been printed in the Littleton Report and multiple issues. There have been mailers. There was a community-wide meeting that took place at ACC. So the idea that nobody knows what the supposed benefits of urban renewal are is a little sketchy. But perhaps the best reason for getting rid of it was brought up right tonight by Bill Hoping where he said that he just learned from the urban renewal board that they can be used to improve the streets. In fact, the streets aren't in the urban renewal plans. They are excluded explicitly from the Littleton Boulevard, from the Broadway Plan. They were excluded from the Santa Fe Plan until six months later when the staff discovered that they needed to get the streets in for the appropriate ratio for the agricultural land. And my guess is they're excluded from the Columbine Square Plan also. Reading from page 48, the Littleton Boulevard Plan, it says, and this is the end of the legal description, it says, "excepting therfrom all streets, alleys, roadways contained in the above description." So what we have in front of us tonight is a very real example of the problem that's been happening with urban renewal and that is the urban renewal board doesn't even know what has been included in the urban renewal plan and they have been bringing forth that information to their liaison, who also doesn't know what's in the urban renewal plan. We've got four urban renewal plans that are passed. The board doesn't know, they didn't read to the plans before they were passed. The Santa Fe Plan was passed and then given to Eric to determine what the boundary was and whether there was the proper amount of agricultural area without ever giving him the legal description. The plan didn't match the legal description and the council came back with a fix-up six months later to correct that issue because the legal description didn't match what was being used to calculate the area. You don't have to look very hard to see very real examples of why urban renewal hasn't worked in Littleton and that's because the people that are administering it are basically not paying attention and I'm being polite. So I don't know what else is going to come out in a study session. I don't know what could come out in a study session that hasn't come out in front of the Planning Commission, who's held hearings on every one of these plans, and hasn't come out on the council, who's held hearings on each one of these plans. And I don't know what would come out on the Lift Board, who's held hearings on each one of these plans. So if we want to hold new hearings on the plans because we didn't listen to what was happening before, I guess we can do that. But at this point in time, I would think that the benefits and the problems with both urban renewal and the implementation of it should be pretty clear to the council.
Yeah. Councilmember Cole.
Yeah, so I'd like us to have the discussion. One of the things I'd be interested in our hearing a little bit about, Michael, is comparison of what we can do with urban renewal with the gap financing, which is a whole different thing from our economic incentives that we've used, for example, with King Supers and Breckenridge Brewery. Because those didn't involve gap financing, they were incentives to get some, two pretty significant developments, although one, they both were almost after the fact, but they still were, played a role there. And as I say, that's not gap financing, so what I'm going to do is to attract some businesses that are going to thrive and make, make this an even better city than it is. So knowing, knowing what our, our options are and the strengths and weaknesses of the two different approaches, I, I think would be very helpful.
So this is a second opportunity at speaking? Has everybody had their opportunity for one? Okay, number two.
I'd just like to offer a brief response to Councilwoman Clark's comment about the streets. And I took the bold step of actually calling an urban renewal attorney and asking the question about if all the, the benefit had to go on the site. And that was his answer, that it could be on adjoining streets and, and that, that's a, it's a part of urban renewal law. I was involved in another conversation with an urban renewal attorney where the same question was asked. So that's where that came from. It had nothing to do with a specific plan. I got the impression, and I'm not an attorney, but I got an impression, the impression from that, that that's a part of general urban renewal law, that as long as it benefits the urban renewal area, that can be done. So that's just for citizens to know that that's kind of the way I do my homework.
Does anyone else have a second comment?
Yeah. It was mentioned that we're not open for business, but if I'm not mistaken, City Manager, you told me that our Planning and Development Department is swamped?
They are very busy, yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else with a second comment? And just to kind of get us back on track, so we have the motion in the second for the proposed motion by Councilmember Brinkman. After we deal with this, should there be a need to deal with it further, we will go back to the original motion and so we still have business to conduct. And my comment is I can understand the need for a study session if it accomplishes the issues that Councilmember Valdez mentioned and that is, let's understand what the unraveling means, let's understand what, what's going to happen, let's understand the process, let's, let's make sure that Lift understands what's going on with that. I think, you know, there's nothing wrong with communication, so...
I have one comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
If you don't call me Valdez anymore, I won't call you Beckman.
And there's a...
And we wouldn't have as much fun.
That's been an ongoing thing we've been doing, so. Councilmember Brinkman.
The intention here is not to replay hearings. The intention here is not to do anything other than spend a few minutes, perhaps an hour or more, discussing the issue of going without an urban renewal authority. So it isn't about a sale at all. And I think that some of the things that Councilmember Clark brought up in his comments are reasons why it's important for us to sit down and have a conversation about what this really does mean and what are the real realities and what are the real realities of Lift. We're hearing there's a lot of information out there and it's time for us to get into a room with the experts, the professionals, and our boards and have a conversation and make a big decision one way or the other. That's, that's the full intention. Anything else is, is created.
Councilmember Clark, number two, yeah.
One more bite of the apple here. Once again, thank you, Bill, for making an excellent example. The question has come up and been answered multiple times in multiple hearings about whether the urban renewal authority can spend money outside the boundaries of the urban renewal area. And the answer that was given by the Executive Director of Lift as well as the consultants and the attorneys is no. So you may be getting a different opinion from your attorney, but the idea that these questions that have already been asked and already been answered are going to get clarified in an hour's worth of session is pretty far-fetched. And the idea that the council doesn't know what would happen without urban renewal, we've been going without urban renewal for 20-some years.
That's not what I said.
Okay. Sorry. That's what I thought you said.
No, that's not what I said.
Okay, are we ready to vote on Councilmember Brinkman's motion? Could you read it again for us?
I move that ordinance 03-216 abolishing the Littleton Urban Renewal Authority pursuant to CRS 31-25-115 print two and repealing the city's urban renewal plan be tabled until June 7th, during which time council will conduct meetings with our appointed urban renewal authority, the Planning Board, and other pertinent entities as appropriate in order to learn and explore all sides of the issue and determine in open meetings whether or not the dissolution of Lift and the city's urban renewal plan is in the best interest of our citizens.
And we have a second. We're ready to vote?
The vote is five in favor with Councilmember Clark and Councilmember Beckman voting no. The motion carries five to two.
I think the second part then is, as I mentioned, is to figure out if we can do a study session then on April 26th or, or whatever seems to...
Yeah, I would ask the council just plan on having that study session on April 26th. And I'll work with the mayor on the details.
Item number 5C is the certification of the March 15th, 2016 regular meeting minutes and that was pulled by Councilmember Clark.
I pulled that so I can vote no.
Can I get a motion from someone then?
Move to approve certification of March 15th, 2016 regular meeting minutes.
Do we have a second? We have a, we have a motion in a second? Any discussion? Number Hoping, I need to, Bill, you need to get your...
You've got the second? Yes?
It's fine with me. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Don, you need to head to switch there.
Oh, I thought it was welded down.
The vote is six in favor with Councilmember Clark voting no. The motion carries six to one.
Mr. Chairman, could I have a five-minute break? Request.
You can. We'll be in recess for five minutes.
What, you're going to catch up on the girls' basketball game?
What, you're going to catch up on the girls' basketball game? Ladies, that's just. Jim Reese. Jim? Are you staying? Jim Reese? Yeah, you're going to stay. 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 Jim Reese?
The areas that you see on the left that are in yellow, gold, were incorporated into the adjacent neighborhoods. So, the extension of those neighborhoods was thought to be most logical at this point. And when we get into redoing those neighborhood plans, we can revisit not only those boundaries, but the boundaries of the neighborhoods themselves. And Planning Board is interested in doing that as well. Plans were posted online. We posted both on the city's website and also on the open Littleton. And for public comment from April to June, or July, excuse me, of last year, about 150 people looked at that. We only had 11 comments. And of those 11 comments, most of them were the kind of comments that are useful for the long term in terms of when we actually start the neighborhood plans, what are the issues? And so, people were looking ahead towards those. But we only had one comment that really was directly looking at the edits that had been done by Planning Board. And that was talking about taking out Gallup, the recommendation of extending Gallup. And Planning Board had done that, so it was a supporting comment. Planning Board public hearing on September 28th. Planning Board held a public hearing on a resolution to recommend approval to City Council. Following that, following the comments that they had gotten from the public, they unanimously supported the resolution seven to zero. And that's Resolution Number 12, Series of 2015, that you have in your packets. Policy question again for tonight is, should City Council approve, City Council Resolution Number 17, Series of 2016, approving these fairly simple edits to the plan, just to clarify what is current in the plan and what's in its direction? With intent that Planning Board will be going back at some point to look at the neighborhoods much more specifically and update those plans when they feel like you do a full neighborhood process. And so, they feel like this is a good interim step. Questions?
Does Council have questions?
You had mentioned that the plans do not include Broadway on the east side of Broadway, that they're not included in the Kittering Plan or the Progress Plan.
They weren't originally, yeah.
You had mentioned that they weren't relevant to the neighborhood. I have a whole bunch of residents that live over there that say it is very relevant.
Absolutely. That's why we've included them. Yeah. So, they weren't in the 198-- they're not currently--
They're not included in the plans that you're presenting tonight.
They should be, yeah.
Oh, they are. So, these lines are saying that they are indeed in there?
They are indeed in there, yes, absolutely.
And then, okay, if that's what they are, because I didn't read it as that way, and that was my mistake.
Okay.
So, they are in there. Because that is definitely relevant, especially with Ralph Shump vacating.
Absolutely.
We need to have discussion on that.
Right.
Is there discussion? I didn't see that on what to do, what we--
No, there's very little discussion in the plans. And that's why I think, you know, another push to look at the Broadway corridor, that's one of the things we'll be looking at, is Broadway corridor for a plan update at some point.
But my problem with, my concern, I should say, with approving this tonight on the Kittering and Progress area, is that it'll be backburnered again, just as it has been time after time after time, with no Planning Board meetings. I would rather not approve this tonight until we know something is indeed addressing those issues, especially with Ralph Shump vacating and other small pockets over there turning over. Again, I do hear from residents over there in District Two, it's very important for them. And for me to say, oh, you are, it is now included, but we haven't addressed until some later date.
Yeah, currently, what we're doing in situations where we don't think we have enough direction from the neighborhood plans, is we refer to the citywide plan. And the vision and the goals and the actions in the citywide plan have been fairly useful in terms of giving us that kind of direction, in terms of what's the city looking for as a whole. We don't have the details we'd like from the neighborhood plans or from the corridor plans yet, but that's how we're proceeding. So, proceeding next with, and we're doing the two stationary master plans, and then we'll be looking at doing corridor plans for Littleton Boulevard and Santa Fe and Broadway.
Okay. So, tell me again, why they, why it has not been fully addressed then within this plan?
Not addressed in this plan because the Planning Board did not want to make any additional policies or goals without a full public process, which is an extensive, as you know, from the 1981 plan. It took a long time, a lot of effort on part of the neighborhoods and the staff and City Council and Planning Board to put those plans together. They didn't think it was fair to do that. They thought they had enough direction, or could get enough direction, from the citywide plans and the upcoming corridor plans.
So, your note on here, when it says "not included," it actually is now included?
Isn't it? Yes, that's the old, that's the old map you're probably looking at. If you look at the one on the right, that's incorporated all those areas that were not included previously.
Again, I'm just not comfortable with it being addressed yet, when the Planning Board has not been active and didn't say that they don't have time to do it right now. I'm just, I'm not sure I can support this at this moment. Go ahead, Alson.
Phil. Thank you, Dennis. Let me make sure I kind of understand the package a little bit as a clarification. What we have is an Attachment A, which talks about the status of small area plans. And in part to address what Councilmember Valdez was referring to. This is, to some extent, a sequencing of what would be where you might go with regard public hearings with regard to the small area plans. And of which, there's a number of those high areas. Has there been any discussion of sequencing those to at least get a part at Councilmember Valdez's question?
Yeah, there's been discussion. I think what may happen realistically is we, it'll depend on partially what the opportunities are. You know, we had an opportunity for the two stationary master plans because of financing. We had funding available, significantly, 80% of the contract for consultants came from grants. So, it'll be partially that as well as where the need is. I think what City Council sees as priorities, what Planning Board hears as priorities, sees as priorities. Where are there questions that you need answers to? If it's on Broadway, Broadway corridor, that may take precedent over some of the other corridors. It's that type of issue that we need to figure out. Where do you need some additional details? Where do you need that kind of direction?
Okay. So, I'm going to mush some things together. If indeed we do have this joint session, whether it's April 26th or somewhere between that window and June 7th that we established earlier in sitting down with the Planning Board, is it reasonable to look at a sequencing of those outside the TOD plans? Because those are currently on a schedule and currently active.
I would think so. I think we can talk again about priorities. That's how we got to the list that's in the citywide plan now, the list you see is that appendix. That was adopted as part of the citywide plan after a discussion with City Council and Planning Board. And actually, City Council adopted the original list, excuse me, amended the original list to make some changes that you saw were necessary. So, we could certainly do that again.
Just to put it a little bit sooner and to get to some of Councilmember Valdez's issues of making sure we go through those. And then, in looking at the neighborhood plans, or small area neighborhood plans themselves and the seven that are there, what essentially has been done is if a project's been completed, it's been deleted.
Right.
If changed conditions are such that it's impractical, or it's been possibly considered and a changed plan makes it obsolete, that part is taken out. But there's no change with regard anything that impacts the character of our neighborhoods at this stage, because there's not been any public hearing regarding those. And so, for the most part, what it is, is it's extraction of items in that cleanup. It's not changing any of the goals or any of the character that's there. It's basically taking items out so that it's not confusing.
Correct.
Because they're, I know very personally with regard items in District Three, the current wording of items can cause confusion and great upsetness that took us into a very distracted set of times.
Yes, absolutely.
I just wanted to make sure I understood.
That was exactly their intent. You stated it well, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Hopping.
Dennis, thank you for this. A couple of questions. One, I was a bit surprised to see Trailmark, which is our newest neighborhood, marked medium. But I understand that that's because there was no plan at all. Is that correct?
That's correct. Well, they have a plan, but it's really a development plan rather than a neighborhood plan. The reason it's not high is because they're not, it's pretty stable at this point. There's not much happening. They're not getting development pressure. Their zoning matches, you know, what's there. They're not seeing a huge push for anything, nothing above and beyond, but could be handled in other avenues than a plan. Plan tends to be for larger, longer-term issues, but absolutely, yeah.
Okay. And then, the second question is on the Goddard neighborhood, which is in my district. And right, if you look at the map, right in the middle of the Goddard plan is Centennial Square. And I took the liberty to call the Planning Board Chair and talk to her about that. And her comment was that that conversation was held a while ago. Columbine Square has deteriorated considerably since that conversation. And, you know, I'd like to, I'll probably make a motion that that moved up, be moved up to a medium. Does that give you any heartache?
No.
What's your reaction to that?
That's right.
Okay. Has the Board discussed that at all?
Not really, not directly. I think if you look at the Goddard plan, however, there are other issues in there that really could be addressed. I mean, I think there's a sense of where they were going in 1981 that is not where they're headed now, just because of significant changes in the transportation network and other things. So, entire plan, definitely, it could be revisited, definitely.
Okay. Because that was, as Councilwoman Cole frequently points out when you walk around the neighborhoods, that was, the most common question I got was community character and what's going on with Centennial Square. So, really like to address that.
This is a picky question.
Okay.
So, in the Goddard plan, one of the land use, the first land use policy says that new commercial uses be encouraged to locate in concentrated, established, commercial districts, primarily downtown. Well, why, what does any reference to downtown have in the--
I think we have a lot of issues throughout all the neighborhood plans. I think, given the context in which they were developed at the time, and they're developed by each neighborhood and then put together, we need to have more of a structure. So, you're absolutely correct. I mean--
I mean, it seems maybe just that that--
Right.
That little phrase should be just eliminated from the Goddard. I mean, in one sense, every single neighborhood might say, oh, do it primarily downtown, or do it primarily over there, or whatever.
Yeah. But I think there's a whole, you know, a tone in the Goddard neighborhood plan, too, that we really need to revisit in terms of what's the real character of the neighborhood and where, what kind of development do they want to see?
Yeah. But saying where else it should be is totally irrelevant, I think.
I agree. I think Planning Board would agree as well, absolutely.
Yeah. Thank you.
Councilmember Clark? Councilmember Brinkman? We don't have any comments. Everybody's been around once. Do we have any second comments? I do.
Sorry, just briefly. Getting back to my point on the Broadway thing, it's, you know, as I read it, it hasn't changed. It doesn't, nothing's changed other than adding it to a map. And I would really like the Planning Board to put a little bit of narrative in here of some sort that addresses those areas as they do change.
And I think their concern was they didn't want to do that with a full, without a full public process. They wanted all the neighbors involved. They wanted to hear all sides of the story and really get a really in-depth discussion, which would come with either a corridor plan or a neighborhood plan. They're really looking at doing it as a corridor plan for Broadway, perhaps even two corridor plans, because the character changes so dramatically from north to south on Broadway.
But I don't see where it says they're going to do this in the future.
Oh, in the list on that appendix that came out of the citywide plan that talks about the priorities, the Broadway plan, corridor plan is listed there as one of the higher priorities. And there's also one for Littleton Boulevard, so we'll actually get kind of the intersection of the two. There's also an activity area right at that intersection. So, it really kind of hit in three different ways in terms of looking at the issues there and addressing the issues of, you know, we've got to address a lot of things that aren't addressed well in the 1981 plan, because things have changed so dramatically. And the residential on the east side, just the scope and scale of the development along Broadway and how it works, you know, for the city, it's--
And I really appreciate what they've done. They've done some great work cleaning this up. I just would have preferred to see more about what could potentially happen.
Sure.
Even though it's, it may not happen.
Right.
But it's not addressed whatsoever.
True.
That's it.
Any additional questions of Senior Planner Dennis Swain? Don't make a motion. I'll need a motion in a second, and we have to have a public hearing.
Public hearing first.
So, should I do the public hearing first? Okay. Thank you, Dennis. I'd like to open the public hearing at 7:57. The public hearing is an opportunity for folks in the council chambers here to comment on this resolution approving updated boundaries and maps and updated maps and goals and policies for seven of the city's neighborhoods as an amendment to the comprehensive plan. I have one person who's interested in discussing in relation to this, and that is Jason Reynolds. Sir, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the town, City Council. Just wanted to step forward. I live in the Progress Park neighborhood. Indicate my general support for this proposal with a caveat that, as Mr. Swain indicated, these plans really are outdated. They do need to be updated. They need full discussion among the community members in each of the neighborhoods or the corridors, as was discussed for the Broadway. Just one example, in the Progress Park plan, it calls for Windermere Avenue to be restripped to four lanes. While that may have made sense in 1980, it no longer makes sense. It doesn't represent current transportation planning or, you know, modern planning theory, which encourages complete streets that serve pedestrians, cyclists, and vehicles in a safe manner and not just vehicles. So, it's sort of a conditional support for this proposal, acknowledging that the city has a lot of work ahead and, as several council members noted. And one final thing is that these plans are not just meant to serve as visions for the community. They also serve to market the community. There's been some discussion tonight about how do we market ourselves as a place for development and for quality development. And it is through thoughtful, reasoned, community-supported plans that we can advertise ourselves as open for business. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. That's the only name I had signed up for public comment. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a public comment? Pam?
I'm Pam Chadbourne, District One. And the sign-up sheet wasn't there when I was looking for it. So, what I'd like you to do is postpone this resolution to a date certain, to allow for a review session with the Planning Board, a public information and comment session, and a second public hearing. And the goals are to assure that both council and public understand the changes and the impact of the changes, and let citizens comment on the changes, and then hold a second public And I've got too many concerns to mention, but the changes are more than simplification and clarification. It was actually a stopgap because the response to the Heritage Neighbor Replanting Effort was so huge, the Planning Board said, well, we're just going to do a cleanup. But at least three neighborhoods have fundamental changes. And let me say, when you include areas that haven't been in a plan before in a plan, that legitimizes them. And if I'm a developer with a good lawyer, I can say that now that these are in a plan, I can apply all of these things that I want. Whereas if they're not in the plan, that's not clear. And it's much clearer to staff that if a developer approaches them for an area that's not in a plan, they've got to bring it to public review. And if you legitimize these by including them in the plan, staff will proceed with this without public knowledge. And I have to tell you, in light of the past couple of years, that is fatal to Littleton. I'm quite sure of that. So, do not legitimize these maps. And I'm going to make a comment, just a management comment. There's a failure mode here to focus on documents instead of the task and objectives. So, we've got to quit focusing on getting the document done and work on what we're trying So, the idea that you remove goals that are completed is not a sound approach. For example, if you remove a trail, then a developer reading this has no knowledge of the trail as part of our plan and goals and objectives. You leave it in as something you're going to maintain and keep in your community. You don't remove it. Otherwise, a developer or a Planning Board in two, three, six years will know nothing about valuing that trail. And infeasibility may change tomorrow with no intent or planning. And also, you cannot do this without reference to top-down objectives, a transit plan, an infrastructure plan, a historic preservation plan for the whole city. Planning Board must have had at least 10 hours of discussion over more than a year. And, Council, you can't address this without some kind of a review session. It's just too much stuff. Also, want to point out, thanks to Wendy for helping me with this, August 24 study session isn't even available. It's not even on the website. It's not listed. You can't even go look at it if you wanted to see it. And let me highlight some of the comments by the members. They noticed that there are a bunch of policy issues. And one of them said, my eyes were blazing over the average Joe is just going to give up on this after a while. There's just too much here.
Pam, you're running out of time.
Thank you. So, my appeal, and Council, I did give you a handout, which I don't usually do. I should have started earlier, but please, move it to a date certain, hold a review session with Planning Board, let us, the public, know the implications and impacts of these changes, and then bring it back for public comment and hearing and your votes. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Any other person like to make a public comment? I don't see anybody that closes the public hearing at 8:04. I do need a motion.
I move to approve the resolution approving an updated neighborhood boundaries map and updated maps, goals, and policies for seven of the city's neighborhoods as an amendment to the comprehensive plan.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. What discussion do we have? Councilmember Brinkman?
Well, I guess, I really appreciate Mr. Reynolds' comments, and I think that they're very insightful, and I would echo those. And I think that the, really, as they would extend across all of the neighborhood plans, I think that this was a good run at the neighborhood plans. And I know at some point, Council kind of reined the Planning Commission in a bit regarding the planning, regarding what they were, you know, what their intentions were. And I would actually really encourage the Planning Board to come back to the council with a plan on how they intend to complete this project, because I don't think it's done. And I think that we do have missing neighborhood plans in here, and I think that we do have a lot of changing conditions. We can't keep track of all of those. And I understand combining the city, you know, overlaying the citywide plan is a great idea. And it does, it does kind of fill those gaps. But regardless, there's still issues within each neighborhood that I think adding a bullet point on some of these that shows that there is, that we recognize that, and that we, in terms of changing conditions, particularly those that are neighborhoods along some of the corridors, I think there's a way to handle that that would provide updated, comprehensive neighborhood plans that could live longer than a year, and certainly not as long as 50. And I think there's a way to integrate our corridor plans, our citywide plan, and all of that into a document where we have comprehensive neighborhood plans included. They don't all have to be exclusive of each other. They don't have to be, we don't have to fill a bookcase with these things. Neighborhood plans don't need to be 25, 30 pages long. They can be a couple of quality pages of information as it relates to the corridor those neighborhoods are on. So, I would, I would strongly suggest that, I would really like to see planning come back to us with a plan on how they would work through these. I think that, based on the list of priorities they had, that that can also be perhaps reprioritized based on some of the comments here tonight. But I will, I do support what you've done. I'll go ahead and approve it tonight, but I really am encouraging a little bit deeper and more comprehensive look at this, without it taking five years. Thank you.
And I'll echo Mayor Protem Brinkman's comments on the sequencing and scheduling, as I mentioned earlier, which is included in Attachment A with regard priorities. What I'd like to see is probably some outline that's a little more specific in that, in that area, recognizing that we do have some areas that have bubbled up, as Councilmember Hopping mentioned, that we may want to adjust some of that, given changes since even the last discussion. And I know that, I personally looked at the Heritage Kittering and South neighborhoods being those that encompass District Three very closely. And my questions to Director, Assistant Director Swain, Planning Director, was on with regard not changing any of the neighborhood character elements that are included in those plans, that what was taken out was basically something I could definitely see as an edit and know that more work needs to be done with regard those. And for those areas that were included, that weren't included in the prior plans, most of them are either already trails, or already parks, or already designated as commercial areas that the land use is well-established on. So, I feel very comfortable in supporting this.
I don't feel as comfortable, but I will go ahead and approve it with the idea a lot of these things are going to happen. I think you have a good idea that the Board does need to come back with a plan. I think that's kind of what helped me out there. Many of these things could have happened last year, but the Planning Board was available. I also understand from the city manager that because the staff is busy with plans that are coming into the city, folks, Littleton's, things are happening out there. So, don't, don't think things are not. If not, then we need to get rid of your folks, because they're acting like they're busy and they're not really. But I do believe they're busy, so I can understand why meetings have been canceled over the past year. So, as long as, I think what you said, let's come back with a plan and get this thing done. Thank you.
Phil.
Doug, you want to go? No, the mayor, okay.
You're on. Councilmember Hopping.
That's his job, I'm sorry. First. I would, I support this, and I support Councilwoman Brinkman and Councilman Valdez's comments in terms of--
But not mine.
And yours too, Phil. So, I support everybody's comments there. But I particularly support reactivating the Planning Board and making sure that they're able to have a consistent approach to their work by constant meetings, or consistent meetings unless they are specifically, there's a very good reason not to have it. I would like to offer an amendment, just to add the simple phrase at the end of the motion that's on the table, after the word "plan" to insert the phrase, with the exception that the Goddard neighborhood should be upgraded from a low priority to a medium priority.
There was a motion.
Okay, I'm just writing it down.
Can I ask a question? Is that--
We need a second. We have a second on that. Do we have a second on the proposed amendment from Councilmember Hopping to change the Goddard neighborhood priority from low to high?
No, medium.
I'm sorry, low to medium?
Low to medium.
We have a second.
Because of sympathy for Bill, I will second that.
Okay, now we are open for discussion.
My man.
Well, I have a question on, is the sequencing in Attachment A part of the motion? Because I didn't necessarily see that, but it was more of a, here's where it's going as opposed to it being included with the, with the motion that actually impacted the plans, because I didn't see Attachment A as being in the plans, but the sequencing of future work.
Yeah, it's actually, it's a page out of the citywide plan, the schedule that was adopted with that, so it's not part of the neighborhood plans themselves.
So, I think my comment would be, Councilmember Hopping, I think that discussion is the one we have with the Planning Board, because it's actually in a separate document rather than the one that's here.
Do we have additional comment on the amendment?
My only comment is I support what you're saying, and I'm going to vote no on the amendment because of what Phil just said. Just--
Whatever, what you said.
Yeah. It's apples and not oranges and--
Typical Phil comment.
Do we have additional comment on the amendment?
So, repeat the amendment, please.
Amendment is, Councilmember Hopping, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's the existing motion, but to add to the end of it, to change the Goddard neighborhood priority-- from low to medium.
So it's actually a main motion that has been amended at the time it's been made?
Yeah. So this becomes the main, so we have a main motion on the floor.
Good move.
And we have amended now, main motion.
Well, we haven't amended it yet.
That's what we're voting on.
I'm sorry, did we have a main motion before?
Yeah.
We had a motion and a second.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, we had a main motion.
So we have a motion on the floor for the, for the original motion. We have an amended motion that was from Councilmember Hopping. Any additional comment on the amended motion? Are we ready to vote?
I would prefer that we have that as a, an amendment to the main motion without the comment.
Without what?
Without, without adding the Goddard neighborhood to the main motion. So we would have the main motion, as we have in front of us, then have an amendment to the main motion to add Goddard.
We do.
That's what you're voting on.
We only have one motion.
That's an essence.
We have a motion.
I was wrong.
We have a motion and we have an amendment. We need to vote on the amendment.
So that's what we was on the floor.
You made two motions at once?
No, Deb made a motion.
Mayor Pro Tem Brinkman moved, and Councilmember Ser Nannick seconded to approve the resolution. And then Councilmember Hopping moved to amend the main motion, and Councilmember Ser Nannick seconded.
No, that was Councilmember Clark seconded.
So...
Out of sympathy.
Let's get us back on center here. Back on center, and, you know, part of the problem is, we can do one amendment to a motion, so that's where we're at, and we need to decide whether we're going to accept the amendment as proposed by Councilmember Hopping. So are you ready to vote?
There you go. Yeah. Okay. It's clear right now.
I'm sorry. Valdez.
The vote is, the vote is three in favor with Councilmember Brinkman, Councilmember Beckman, and Councilmember Valdez, and Councilmembers Ser Nannick, voting no, the motion fails three to four.
Okay, so we're back to any discussion on the original motion, which is to, it is the motion that's actually on our paperwork. It says, it would say, "I move to approve the resolution approving an updated neighborhood boundaries map and updated maps, goals, and policies for seven of the city's neighborhoods as an amendment to the comprehensive plan that's been motioned and seconded." Any further discussion? Councilmember Clark?
Yeah, I'm going to vote for this, but I will point out that Attachment A has eight items that are listed as high priority, and four items that are listed as medium priority, and we almost got five items listed as medium priority. So if we want to prioritize it, it's really our job to do this, to throw this back to the planning staff or the Planning Commission, and say, "Come back to us with a plan," when we won't even say what the priorities are. So Broadway is important, because you've got something potentially happening with Chomp. Obviously, South Santa Fe is important, because we potentially may have something happening with Enzor. Somebody has to make a decision, and it's really us. So what you have in front of you is a document that's so unspecific that the planning staff really doesn't know where to go with what we have. So if we have priorities that we really want to have happen, we ought to specify what they are. And so we give some direction to both the Planning Commission and the planning staff, and then the Planning Commission might be able to come back to us with a plan on how to achieve what it is that we think our priorities are.
Are you going to second bite of the apple now? Let's see, we are. Phil, go ahead.
I was just going to add to Councilmember Clark's point, and if we wanted to take that up as an agenda item at our study session next week, we can probably go through this fairly quickly and identify or even sequence these items from our perspective and be ready for that discussion with the Planning Board.
Any additional comments? And I just want to add the comment that I do support getting this voted on today, because it's a step from where it was. This has, this has actually been months, if not years, in the making to get it to this point, but this is not really representative of the work we want to have in the community. And I support the comments that were made by, I think, almost every Councilmember, that we need a fuller discussion, we need to establish what our priorities are as a council, we need to eliminate some of the challenges of wording that were mentioned by Councilmember Cole, and we certainly need to get more specific in some of those areas so that Planning Commission and staff know where our priorities are. So are we ready to vote?
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, we have no items for Agenda Item 7, general business tonight. That takes us to public comment. Public comment is, this is the second opportunity for public comment. Public comment's an opportunity for anyone to express opinions or ask questions that are not part of the public hearings, which we just conducted one. An immediate response should not be expected. Anyone who would like to speak during either the public comment session, either of them, either the first one or the second one that we have now, please sign up, and I have a sign-up sheet that I'm, I want to make sure I, there isn't confusion, so I'm going to read some names, make sure that these folks are ready to comment at this time. We expect comments to be civil. Disrespectful behavior will not be tolerated, and you have three minutes. So on this sheet I have, the next one is Marty Brezak.
Can I get the overhead, please? Thank you. My name is Marty Brezak, and I live in District Four. I've asked the question, oh, I'm here to talk about the subdivision exemption policy specifically for the Grove. I've asked the question many times, starting in January of this year, and I got no answer. I then had a meeting with Mark Ralph, and thank you, Jocelyn, for sticking around. Maybe you can help out here. And I asked the question specifically, what piece of property was divided such that it qualified for the subdivision exemption policy? I got no response, excuse me, I got a response, it wasn't the answer. The response was, "I guess we'll have to agree to disagree." Norm Brown came here on March 15th, asked the question of the mayor. I got a written response from Jocelyn Mills, and she quoted the policy, I didn't, excuse me, I didn't get the answer, an answer, but she quoted the policy, and it reads, excuse me.
There you go.
"It is the purpose and intent of this chapter to allow the owner and/or purchaser of land or agent thereof to divide such, divide such land into more than two parcels." Very important, because if you apply this policy to the Grove, you eliminate the public input, which means going to the Planning Board, which means having a public hearing, which means coming to the council for a decision. So I would like to know what piece of property was divided to allow that Grove property to fall into the subdivision exemption plan. By the way, the subdivision exemption plan was also used in District Four for the fire station. When we, when the facts were presented, when the evidence was presented, those two pieces of property were combined and not divided. That eliminated the public process, which meant no Planning Board, no public hearing, and no council decision. So please explain that to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Carol Brezak. You have three minutes.
I'm Carol Brezak. I live in the same district that Marty does. I'm here tonight to suggest to the councils that there's a great way to save some money, which we all like to do, and it's a way that you can be more open and transparent as a council with your citizens. And we have a model here, right in our state with Fort Collins. They have what they call an email transparency policy. I'm going to reach you just from the first page of their website, and then I'll, I have a copy for each of you. It says, "Under the Colorado Open Records Act, all emails to and from city council are subject to public disclosure with limited exceptions. To promote transparency, emails will be visible in an online archive unless the sender puts a hashtag private in the subject line of the email. However, the city of Fort Collins can't guarantee that email to or from council marked hashtag private will remain private under Cora. With limited exceptions, all emails addressed to or sent by city council will be available for public review via an online archive that is viewable through any web browser. Confidential messages will not be included in the online archive. Under the Colorado Open Records Act, city council emails, with limited exceptions, are subject to public disclosure. City council wants to be as transparent as possible to the community they serve in how city businesses transacted and city decisions are reached, so they are voluntarily making their emails available for online viewing. For more than 15 years, Global Relay has been in the business of cloud-based data archiving, and they are the trusted partner for more than 18,000 customers needing data archives and compliance solutions. The annual cost of hosting the city council email with a cloud-based service from Global Relay is $2,195, $395 are setup fees and $150 a month. This is less than the city would pay a senior programmer or a developer for just a week of work in building a product of similar quality in-house, would take months of work from server administrators, database administrators, application programmers, as well as the cost of the hardware to house it. I have been on the Fort Collins website and taken a look at this, and it's really fascinating how open their government is. I would also suggest that maybe we follow Inglewood and take a further step in being open and transparent and putting all of our check register available on the website for the public to view at any time. So I think it would save a lot of money in Cora requests that have to be managed. I know how much I pay for them, I know how much time that Wendy spends doing this. This would eliminate a lot of that work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeanne Erickson, District One. This may not be quite as prepared, because I just wrote it while I was sitting here. The real realities regarding urban renewal are the city council has been spoken to over and over and over again. Regarding urban renewal, there have been study sessions with Tracy Huggins, the Director of Denver Urban Renewal. There have been study sessions with Ann Ricker, the slum and blight queen of Colorado, self-proclaimed. There have been an ACC community meeting. I personally attended that. I attended all of the study sessions. I attended four of the slum and blight ladies' meetings around town about three years ago. And I attended all of these meetings because I wanted to be informed. I wanted to know what urban renewal was all about, and what would be the benefits for our city. That's the reason I went. I was looking for positive things that urban renewal could do for us, for the city that I love. By the way, Columbine Square is self-inflicted blight, because the owners choose to kick everyone out, not by renewing any of the tenants' leases. I think they were expecting urban renewal money, but to me, this is not what urban renewal is used for, self-inflicted blight, to take money from taxpayers. I also believe the people of Littleton have already spoken regarding urban renewal, and how they feel about urban renewal, because they passed Citizens Initiative 300. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanne. I'm not sure, is it Carol Parker? Carol, you have three minutes.
Thank you. I won't take them all. I want to thank the council for giving me this opportunity to speak. My comments address Councilwoman Brinkman's motion that was passed earlier this evening. And in the motion, she specifically named meetings with experts, professionals, and boards. And I humbly remind Councilwoman Brinkman and the rest of the council that the will of the citizens requires your consideration with greater weight than that of the opinions and points of view of experts, professionals, and boards. Thank you.
Thank you. Pam, I still have your name on a list, but you had spoken, is that right? You're, you didn't have an additional expectation, okay. That completes all the names that I have on the list. Is there anyone who I've missed? Kent, go ahead.
Yes, Mayor, Kent Bagley, 1467 West Prior Wood Avenue. I know that you talked previously in one of your sessions about appointments to boards and commissions, and limiting that for applicants that might be those that were previous council members, previous board or commission members. And I would suggest to you that that is an unwise policy at this time. And part of the reason that I would suggest that that's unwise is that there's somewhat of a limited pool of people that are interested in serving. And I would say that I have personally contacted four individuals, they happen to be all males, they're very interested in their city, but they've all expressed to me because of family-related issues. They're younger, three of them are younger, younger men, and they've all indicated to me that because of the economic downturn around 2008, getting their business back, and a number of these are individual professionals that are not people that work for some large corporation. So family issues, employment issues as far as their own business have restricted them. One of the people that I talked to that was an older person, he's getting close to retirement, and he doesn't want to participate because he needs the time for his own business. So I would really suggest that now is not the time to reduce the pool of people that may be interested. Many of the people, and some of you that sit on this council are retired, not all of you, and many of the people that sit on commission and boards are retired. So that pool of older people gets larger here in Littleton because of the demographic. But don't limit yourself. People that have been involved with city council in the past, and have expressed an interest, should be allowed to serve on boards and commissions. And, you know, the whole issue of family members, and, you know, if you go around, many of you have come back for second terms after having been off the planning, not the planning, but off the city council. So there's a limited pool of people that have an interest, and don't limit yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Kent. I believe that's all the names that I have. Looking around the room, I don't see anyone else. Brings us to Agenda Item Number Nine, which are comments and reports. Nine A is City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like our city clerk, if we could have the computer turned back on, do a quick, just overview of our front page on the website. Just take a minute or two.
Hang on. Don't give up just yet. This is the front page of our website, and we changed our calendars up a little bit. And here, in this area right... And here, in this area, right here, in this light green area, this is our events calendar. If there's any events taking place in the city, such as things over at the library, the museum, when we have any downtown Little Jam, any events that happen in the city is going to be on this calendar. We also have a public meeting calendar. It's the Aqua button on the front. This will have all of our public meetings, such as LIFT, Planning Board, HPP, and of course, all of city council meetings. When you click on a meeting, such as tonight, it brings up what is happening at the meeting. There's the agenda and the meeting documents that are attached here. You can always get them here. Whoops. Then we have our video button. It's the yellow button right here. This has, you can see right here that it says currently in session. If I click that, it would open up the screen and you would hear me talking. Again, this is where all of our videos are, and unfortunately, the way we load them, we have to load them a couple of weeks in advance so people know that there's a meeting. So, sometimes you have to go to the next page, which is down here in this area. Tonight's meeting, it has the agenda and the packet right here, and you can click on those and you can see the packet. And if you click on this area right here, not the attachments, it will take you to the old Legistar page, which shows everything that you need right there. But it does not work on the attachments. It will just show you the attachment if you don't click on this number right here, like 5A, 5B, not on these little ones underneath here. Let me see what else we've changed. The city code up here used to be called...
Can you go back to the meeting videos and show them?
Yes.
The other buttons on that and what's there?
Oh, yes, I will show them the other buttons. If you want to, the other buttons will light up when that current is, when that session is in current, in session, when that session is currently on. If you're going to look under the other packets, right here, in this area right here, I hope you all can see this, you can see that there's different tabs, one for planning, one for licensing, HPP, LIFT, Board of Adjustments, and Board of Appeals.
I've been using that, and that's such an improvement.
Good. I'm glad to hear that.
And Wendy, we had a comment earlier this evening that someone was having, three months of meetings were missing.
Okay, well, I think that that is part of the problem is, is because they're not using the pages down here at the bottom right here, because you'll see that on this first page, it only shows March and April. So, if you go back a page, here's January 26th, here's February 2nd, here is February 9th.
Well, she's looking at those too. When you click on those, you get the video.
You get the video. I was just worried it was going to roll over, but this is the video right here. It's got the agenda on the bottom. I know, that's so awkward, I'm so sorry, Jasmine.
Great job.
It's like, you were just...
Shut that window down.
Here, let me just click on it. And so, when, I just want to go back one, sorry, this on here is very awkward. Let me go back to page one. I want to...
I was looking at the 15th meeting on the 15th.
Yes, that's where I'm going to go, is the 15th meeting.
I just looked at it earlier today.
Because I wanted to show you, this is the way the meeting comes up, and then over here on the side, we have started the practice of putting the motion right here so that if you want to go and find out about the motion and hear the motion, all you have to do is click on that and it will take you to the motion.
I would move the northern boundary of the area included in the...
And that's Councilmember Hoppy making the motion.
...Agenda Item Resolution 212016, approving contact with Charlie Associates for the Downtown Littleton Large State Project.
You can do that through any of this, it's all time stamped. You can go to here and get the roll call.
Can you call the roll?
There, I'm doing the roll call.
Mayor Beckman?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Brinkman?
Here. Does anybody have any questions?
No, kudos, nice job.
Yeah, definitely improvement. And in the journal too, that Councilman Clark had pointed out a few weeks ago.
Yes.
That too is great. Maybe you could go and just show us how to get to that again.
Those are in the same area right here, and we're still, this is a new site, we're still working on getting everything on there, and that's on this right here, and it'll be in this row right here.
And that's handy.
Okay, so they'll all be together. Anybody have any questions? The municipal code, that's what it said. At the top, it now says city code in the yellow at the top.
And we also moved the rumor mill up there because we're only allowed four buttons on that midsection there.
Yes.
Design flaw.
Yeah, our design only allows us those four big buttons.
Thank you, Wendy. All right, we'll quickly go through the manager's minute. We're pleased... No, don't worry about it.
Move to the next one.
No, no, sit. None of them listen to me.
Good girl, good girl.
So, I'll skip, you are sitting. So, we're pleased, we have a plaque, it's upstairs. Oh, "We're so pleased to have been recognized by the Denver Business Journal as the ninth healthiest employer in Colorado. Our wellness efforts for our almost 500 employees are really paying off. This recognition included evaluation of both public and private sector large employers," and it says, "Hold up plaque." So, we will hold up the plaque momentarily. "The Trust for Public Lands is hosting a volunteer project at the new Creekside Experience Park, formerly known as the Murray Property." I think you're all aware of that project. It will be on Saturday, May 21st, from 8:00 a.m. to noon. "We're going to work with our partners at South Suburban Parks and Recreation along with Arapahoe County Open Space to officially dedicate the site then to..." We'll send you guys out a reminder email. "We wanted to get this on your calendars and remind you that there are only eight parking spaces on the site, so plan your trip accordingly." Jazz Car Wash President and Founder Keith Taylor sent us an email on March 24th that said, quote, "We have our big exterior concrete project coming up in April, and have had to work with Pam, James, Tim, Dave, Alyssa, and many others at the city. Without hesitation, everyone has been so helpful and supportive of us as a business and me as a rookie in putting together permits and seeking advice. I am so pleased that we are working with Littleton as I hear so many nightmares about other cities. Thanks much." After being told by our Economic Development Staff, March 17th, that Restaurant Solutions, Inc. had been named to the Denver Business Journalist of Top Accounting Firms, President Blair Pennington, who I think you all met at a study session, sent an email that said, "Holy smokes, this is way cool. Thank you, thank you, thank you. We love Littleton and think moving here was one of the primary reasons for our growth, seriously." Police Division Chief Enley has begun Advanced Training Academy yesterday as a member of the 246th Session of the FBI National Academy in Quantico, Virginia. This is a premier law enforcement executive training program in the world with more than 16,000 graduates since 1934. Chief Enley will be in Quantico for the next three months as he trains and networks with 200 fellow law enforcement executives from throughout the world. CDOT started work yesterday to upgrade the road surface, thank you, on Santa Fe Drive between Crestline and Blakeland Drive. This 4.4-mile stretch is almost the length of the city limits. It will be rodomilled and repaved with new raised medians, curb ramps, and new traffic signal heads and pedestrian crossing push buttons at Bowles Avenue, County Line Road, and Blakeland Drive. This is a much-needed $3.5 million investment scheduled for completion in July. A lot of the work will take place overnight, but there will also be daytime shoulder and turn lane closures, so be aware. There is a project hotline where updates will be posted. You can get that number from the city or CDOT websites. And this may surprise some of you, but repair work on Solar III is scheduled to begin next Tuesday, weather permitting. And that's all for tonight, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, but the plaque.
There it is.
The plaque. Pretty impressive. It's public and private large employers in the metro area. Thank you.
Okay, let's go around with the council reports. Councilmember Cole?
Only one thing. On Saturday was the graduation exercise for the Citizens Emergency Response Team Training, and I don't know the total number of graduates in the program, but it was good. The weather for the graduation exercise was good. One person is still here who graduated, and I think two left already who also completed. But the Citizens Emergency Response Team Training is offered once a year and ending, what, this, you know, like last week's, it's what, six, six, four, four weeks? And it is, it helps people know how to respond in an emergency, whether it be a tornado, a fire, or whatever. The goal is to learn what to do so you can help in those situations and at the very least not become a casualty that somebody else has to come rescue, whatever. And I'm assuming, Mayor, that we'll be recognizing those people.
Yes.
Pardon?
May 17th.
May 17th, so super. Thank you.
Councilmember Clark?
I come meet with you tomorrow, Mr. Penny. Can you have the annual complete financial report for 2015?
Which report? Missed the word.
It's the complete annual financial statement and report for 2015. Thank you. And then, second question is, do we have an audit committee and who's on it?
I'm not sure we do.
No?
The last two years, Doug, it's been a committee in the whole. Have we started the audit? When are we scheduled to meet with the auditor?
They're just prepping. We haven't started the audit yet. We're just doing the internal work right now at the staff level, prepping for it. So, I can get to the dates when they're planning on coming in.
Okay, thank you. And I'm hoping that the council will, at some point in time, come up with the topics that they want to see on study sessions for the coming year. I thought that that would perhaps be part of the city manager goals, that would be city manager and city council goals. I don't know if that's what everybody else has in mind or not.
You know, right now, we're just doing a six-month-out calendar, and any council member can make a suggestion to include a study session on that calendar. So, it's really open in real time, day-to-day, to be able to adjust that.
Okay. Thank you. That's it.
Councilmember Valdez?
Thank you, Mayor. And I have a question for Jim Reese, Executive Director, and I appreciate you staying around. And one of the citizens had brought up this subject, and I was going to bring it up as well, but it was discussing the checking account that is on, is on hold now because there were some fraudulent acts. But when I watched the meeting the other night, they, it was not even discussed, it was mentioned but not discussed, and then it was agreed that there would not be an audit as agreed to or something in a previous email that had gone out. My concern is that there's meetings being conducted through email, and then you just go and vote on a decision. But maybe you could just give me a little information on the account that's been closed? What is the issue there?
Okay. Yeah, there's actually two different issues here. The audit is a totally separate issue, but the, toward the end of last year, the LIFT checking account was compromised, and we had some fraudulent activity take place. It was actually brought to our attention by city staff, and we immediately contacted the bank, Wells Fargo, and had them actually shut that account down. It took some time, apparently, to do that, and some other fraudulent activity occurred the next month. Wells has been addressing those, and they have stopped that. Basically, we have frozen the account and moved most of the money to another account, opened a new checking account, so there's no more activity on that account whatsoever until Wells actually makes, settles up all those fraudulent...
And just to be clear, that the board members have nothing to do with those withdrawals?
Well, the board members, there's actually, the board chair and the vice chair have signature authority.
Right, and they too weren't a part of that, whatever it is being investigated then?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
And the other part was conducting meetings through email, because that is important that we not do that.
I'm sorry, the what?
The, during the course of the meeting, it was either yourself or the chair had mentioned that according, you know, you saw the emails that I sent out and that's about the, why we're not going to do the audit, and then you went and voted without...
Oh, right. So, the audit is, in an organization that's, and I can't remember the exact number, but I think if you do less than $100,000 or, I think it's maybe even higher than that, of activity in a year, there's a form you can fill out, it's called an exemption from audit application, and that's what the LIFT board doesn't spend that much money in one year, so they basically have filed for an exemption from audit.
But again, just, I'm just cautioning that sending out emails and then not discussing it at the next meeting and then voting on whatever the emails that went out, that was the conversation that went on the other night?
There was, because of the timing of the exemption from audit application was due March 31st, and it's prepared by an independent auditing company, so LIFT doesn't have anything to do with it, but it is prepared that way, but you have to have, we had to have the contract approved, and so what our attorney's advice was, since we didn't have a scheduled meeting, is do an email poll, see if everyone is okay with that, authorizing the chair to enter into that contract, and then have it ratified at the following meeting. So, that was an advice of our attorney, and that's what we did.
Okay, again, I just, I'm not opposed to what you guys did, I'm just saying, conducting the meetings that way, I know that would be an issue for us.
It wasn't considered a meeting.
According to some, yeah. Okay, but that was, I appreciate you standing around to answer those?
Sure.
Okay, cool. My other issue is that, not you, thank you very much, I appreciate it, thanks, is that, you know, at our council meetings, we always let them inform the citizens, you know, about expected conduct and what is acceptable and what is not. I want to request that council members go back and read the council protocol and standard of contact, conduct, and not because of any actions of tonight, but there's been previously, there's been some comments made, I thought that were very insulting from one council member to another, and I'd appreciate it if everybody would go back and look at that and follow those guidelines. That's it.
Councilmember Srinanik?
Thank you. Earlier today, Councilmember Valdez and myself had a chance to visit one of our Littleton businesses, Restaurant Solutions, Inc., and they're located at 1101 West Mineral. And folks may remember that particular address because at one point in time, it was at least discussed as a possibility before we did the renovation for the police facility. And what they've done to the building is amazing. Their business looks at accounting, finance, and compliance support for independent restaurants, and very interesting business, and they're actually at an awards dinner tonight, being recognized for the third year in a row as one of the best places to work in the Denver region. And what I found also particularly interesting is they're using the entire second floor, and for folks that had been at that facility, they may remember it's 68,000 square feet. So, they occupy the second floor, and the first floor is a number of tenant businesses, but it also includes a business incubator, which brings me to item number two, which is, there's our ribbon cutting on April 19th, for those folks interested, which is a business incubator and office support, temporary office support, that's going to be opened on, at 26 West Dry Creek. So, we do have some business incubation that's occurring in town, and my recollection is we've never abandoned economic gardening, it's still part of our portfolio, so it's, it continues to be a part of our economic development. The other is with regard, the awards banquet, I know that I've mentioned this before, for the Denver Regional Council of Government, is being held on April 27th, and there is a project within Littleton that's at least being considered at this point in time. And fourth item is, I don't know if she's getting around, but Harriet, who's the Director of the High Line Canal Conservancy, I had a chance to sit down with her for about an hour and a half, talking about what's occurring along the High Line Canal and what they're hoping to do with the Conservancy that's there, and it's kind of exciting in what they're doing, but like most places, looking for those deep pockets. And with that, I'll turn it over to Councilmember Hopping, who has the deep pocket. And with that, I'll turn it over to Councilmember Hopping, who has the deep pockets.
Right. So, um, I, I wanted to expand a little bit on the, the bank issue with the LIFT board. I think they, Wells Fargo came out and said it was their problem. They made a mistake with the account and they are putting the money back in it. So this was, I don't want to leave anything hanging that there was any kind of defalcation or any bad activity on the part of LIFT. It was a bank error, they admitted it, they're putting the money back in. Number two on the, uh, the study sessions that we're looking at, brought from, to urban renewal, I really hope they're open and that, um, we had a comment earlier that it should not just be boards and commissions. I think that's, if I hear Councilwoman Brinkman's motion, it said, "And other entities." And, uh, I think that leaves it a little bit open as far as, um, how we do that and I'll be anxious to, uh, to see how that all gets put together. I hope everybody comes with an open mind to really kind of learn what other people are talking about. At the end of the day, we'll vote on this one way or another and see where it goes. But I, I look forward to openness. Studies, we've had quite a few comments on studies tonight. I think one thing about studies is they are exactly that. And what we really need to look at in the long term, and this was addressed a little bit too, is how we implement them. I mean, it really doesn't do a whole lot of good until they become active live documents and that's what, uh, not just a live document, but live activity that really affects the way the city grows and operates and functions in the future that improves the quality of life that we all want. And lastly, we, uh, the council has been charged to do a, um, Councilwoman Cole and I were asked to be on a housing study board, um, where we're working with other people to, to develop, uh, an RFP for a housing study. And I just wanted to let council know that that's progressing along nicely. We've got a rough outline on that and we're, uh, going to meet in a couple of weeks and, and get more input from the rest of the board. So that's, uh, I think, progressing nicely.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Brinkman.
Thank you. Um, just a couple comments. I'm not going to get the date right, it was in March. And we had a community meeting, our community open house at Carson Nature Center in relationship to the station area master plan at Mineral. And, um, I just want to give huge kudos to Jocelyn and her team. It was absolutely one of the, one of the best open houses I've attended since I've been on council. Um, I thought that the outreach that you did for that was really incredible. It was, um, very, very thorough, very, very well thought out. Um, I had presidents from HOAs calling me, feeling very included, very engaged, um, very partnering, which is exactly what the intention of, of doing this is. And it's a big, huge plan and the outreach is, is, you know, quite a wide net that we're, we're spreading over this. But it was also included, it was also well represented by a number of the businesses in the area. And so I think that's really important too, for them to understand and for them to feel is though, when we have a community meeting, they are part of that community. As I pulled in, just minutes after the meeting started, there was an entire group of people walking away. And it was actually, Jocelyn had come up with this idea to do walking tours in the area so people would get a real on-the-street familiarity with things and that, I just thought that was brilliant. And to see close to 20 people or so taking off on these tours, it was a little chilly day, chilly evening. But the, the response was great and, and I saw, I, I mean, I'm sure you have the numbers on it, but over 98% of the people that were there had never seen them before. And so it was really, I feel that that's, that's so important because we are getting into, um, homes and touching people who we haven't been able to reach before. And they were there and they were engaged and it was, it was just fascinating. And there were so many positive comments. It was really nice to be in a room where people were just enthusiastic and appreciative and really, really proud of what we're doing and, and where they live. So, thank you for doing that and, um, you've set the bar. Keep, keep it moving. Um, the other, um, thing I just want to report on is I am the liaison to the fire partners and we've had a couple of meetings and I'm still, you know, I'm still in the slow lane, I'm catching up, I'm not where Stallman was yet. But, um, we did meet today and I just wanted to let the council know that the, these partner meetings are just so cordial and so supportive. And there is, it is just, uh, really, really, I think, important for us to realize that one of our largest relationships that we have in this community and one of our biggest budget line items and one of the biggest presence we have, you know, and one of our core services, this fire, um, that there's a really, really good team of committed, essentially, you know, volunteer board members and, and then also paid people who are really looking out for what's best for everybody. And it, it's not mine is mine and yours is yours. It's really, it's a good teamwork, there's some exciting things that these guys are working on, becoming to council. Chief Armstrong is amazing, um, very, 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 um, good at sharing information, including people in the discussion and really creating, I think, a, a really healthy, healthy environment for us to be, um, represented at and making decisions that are, are pretty substantial in this community. So, um, be bringing back more information on that as soon as I start to understand it. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings it to me. Uh, just a couple items. Want to review the calendar coming up. We have, uh, a study session coming up on April 12th. And we're going to be discussing, uh, retail marijuana at that study session, as a reminder to everyone. Also, the other thing we'll be talking about is drone and unmanned aircraft systems, which is a real hot button item down in the south area right now. So we'll be talking about that. Uh, April 14th is a council breakfast in the community room. We're going to be meeting with the Littleton Business Coalition, the South Metro Chamber of Commerce, and this, and the Denver South Economic Development folks. Uh, we're, we'll be talking about issues involving economic development and those are our three major partners down in the south area here. And then we have a, on April 19th, another regular meeting. So that's the, kind of the events coming up in the next few weeks. One thing that I've been concerned about, and I've talked to different people about, is our process of accounting for responses to citizens. And that could be sometimes a citizen has an issue here in the council chambers and some of them I know are resolved even before they leave because the city manager is able to get them some information. But sometimes it seems like, uh, the, the challenges go on. I talked to some mayors and some other folks, uh, who work with these communication issues and there are some different ideas out there, there's some different ways to do it. Uh, some of the mayors had different suggestions. And so basically, I've asked the city manager to look into that and see if there isn't some way possibly we can raise the bar on some of those issues. So if any council member has any comments or ideas, they should get them to the city manager. I was really proud to be able to present, uh, through the ELCS, our Littleton Citizen of the Year. Each year, the ELCS puts together a presentation where they identify firefighter of the year, sheriff's deputy of the year, law enforcement officer of the year, and, uh, citizen of the year. And they had asked me for the input for the citizen of the year. And if you hadn't heard or found out about it, the recommendation was clearly somebody who's made a huge difference for Littleton, and that's Mickey Kempf. Mickey has been, uh, just a stalwart member of the community for a very long time. You know him because of his business Bradford Auto. But what, some things you don't know about him is that the Santa Claus coming down during the, uh, parades, that's Mickey. I'm sorry, I, kids are, it's nine o'clock, they don't know. It's Mickey. Or a friend of Mickey's maybe, I don't know. But Mickey, Mickey has done this all on his own. He's created circumstances in which he could be out there doing things that I think just exemplary as a citizen of the community. Peggy mentioned the train he does for the SERC team. He, he started that, he created the opportunity for Littleton to do it, uh, and he's been the lead instructor for it. And he has received tremendous recognition for that. He works with the Littleton Police Citizens Academy, he's, I think, the president perhaps this year, if I'm, or if he's not this year, he has been in the past, he's worked on that. Uh, he is just all around doing things. So it was a great honor to see Mickey represented, uh, as our Littleton Citizen of the Year through the ELCS. Also, our police officer of the year, uh, and our, and our firefighter of the year, and I'm sorry, I can't think of the firefighter's name, it was, uh, I'll bring that to you next week and, and talk to you about that at the next council meeting because the one I worked on was Mickey. So, thank you, that's all I've got for tonight. There's no other business, we're adjourned.